All right. It's after 7:30, everybody's in their seats, so we'll go ahead and get started. I'll call the last meeting of the September Potsgrove School Board meeting to order, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I have my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the secretary will note the role, and we have everybody present tonight, so that's good. And we will note that we had an executive session this evening prior to coming to the -- to start the meeting, and we discussed personnel, safety, and security prior to coming in. And with that, we'll move over to a public comment and ask if anybody has any comments for us this evening. We have no requests that we've received so far. Does anybody want to be heard this evening before we get started with our agenda? Seeing no hands, volunteers, or anybody jumping up, we'll go ahead and get started with the report of the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Linger. This time, I'd like to call up Gary Durenzo, our Director of Community Relations and Co-Curricular Activities, for an update as we just kicked off the school year.
Good evening. I was told I only have five to 10 minutes, so it's been -- that will be a challenge.
I'll concentrate on me. You take the time that you need.
I gotta go to work tomorrow morning and face him, then. It's a good start. First, I would like to say, in an all-serious note, if we could keep our van driver in our thoughts this evening. A rough morning, but if we could keep that -- our van driver in our thoughts, appreciate all of that. I think that would -- that'd be helpful. Just a -- Dr. Schurken and I kind of talked about, you know, the format of this, and again, that's really up to the board's discretion, but I thought a three-month kind of window for all of you to give you an update, like August, September, and October, and then as we go through, I can, you know, continually update the board as you -- as you wish. But beginning in August, and this will be a chronological, just so you can follow along, so -- and please, if there's any questions, feel free to jump right in. Beginning in August, we started really incorporating our new logo. New visuals started appearing. I think you've seen some of the campus flags, the pole flags, as well as some of the window clings in the high school and middle school. So we're continually evolving. I would like to thank the Class of 2019. They made a class gift that has paid for many of the pole flags, so hopefully that will be an impetus for possibly other sponsors joining in. You can see at the bottom of the flag, it says "donated by Class of 19," so again, we're working to work from the high school in Ringing Rocks campus and then move out, matriculate all the way through the rest of the building. So it'll be a process, and hopefully by the spring, we'll have all of the buildings updated and integrated with some type of our new logo. A quick retiree update. We're continually to update our retiree mailing list, and really, this year was the first time we sent our retirees a -- basically, a note of positivity and not a bill from the -- from the benefits world, that we sent them a copy of our annual report, as well as an invitation to come back and pick up their maroon-and-white card so that they could attend events in our district, whether they're musical or athletic events. And we've had -- we've had a very good response so far. We've had a number of people calling Joanne and asked to be added to the mailing list, so we will keep doing that. We'll try to do that four times a year with some type of communications, whether it's a newsletter or happenings in the district, et cetera, but we're gonna try to really bring back our retirees, and they feel -- they want to be connected, and I think we just didn't really have the impetus or the means to do that before. So I think it's been a very positive. And on that same note, I'd like to talk about the Alumni Honor Roll. This is the first year we've partnered with them, and I mean a true partnership, and the October 13th is the date for the luncheon, where four new Potsgrovians will be inducted into the Alumni Honor Roll. And I'd like to read you real quick the four that are going to be inducted. The first one is Ted Drawshak, who's a 1978 graduate. He's a civil engineer, and his work really -- and he's had a tremendous body of work, but his really -- his work right now focuses on specializing in the development and management of U.S. commercial and corporate real estate assets and solar-powered projects. He's really about sustainability, et cetera. So these four gentlemen are wonderful, wonderful Potsgrovians. The next one is 1991 graduate Ricky Thompson. Dr. Thompson is the Director of Cardiac or Thoracic Medicine in Nebraska. He's also an adjunct professor at Nebraska Wesleyan University. Again, another, you know, just a tremendous -- he's gonna have a surprise for us at the luncheon as well, that will be -- will be very beneficial to our district as well. I can't reveal it yet, so you'll -- if you would like to come, I still have invitations. I sent them out to you, but if you'd like to, I still have them. 1994 graduate Nathaniel Guest, and people have heard me say this, I think that -- and I'll say it publicly. He may be one of Pennsylvania's, by the time he's all said and done, greatest conservationist. He was a lawyer by trade. He graduated from Cornell University. His grandfather instilled a love of trains with him, and in a journal one day, he claimed the Cole Brookdale Spur, which was about to be disbanded, and since then, he's raised over $10 million to -- as the Executive Director of the Cole Brookdale Railroad Trust, which is one of the economic impact -- impactors of this area, and just a tremendously talented young man. And lastly, even though he's not a graduate, we're gonna claim him. Sergeant Will James, and he was one of our -- he's one of our Police Department Sergeants right now, but he was also Potsgrove's first Student Resource Officer. So there are four -- attend -- four honorees, and like I said, we would love to have you be at the luncheon on October 13th at Copperfields at noon. We once again have partnered with PennDOT, the Paint the Plow Program. We were fortunate enough to get two plows this year. We have one at the middle school. We have one right out here at the high school. This year, it's part of a competition, so we had to submit a sketch for the high school, and they're gonna paint the plow on a theme, a winter theme, and we were told this year that it might be a very bitter and cold and snowy weather, so hopefully those plows will get some usage. But at the end, once they're done painted, they will be displayed somewhere near our school. At the middle school, I think we might be able to fit it down by the sign at the entrance. The high school, we're not sure if it's gonna be out on Charlotte Street, et cetera, because the area right out on Kaufman, we might not have enough room. But if you remember, last year, we placed them at Pleasant View Road and High Street, so. Saturday, October 12th, we are, again, really trying to focus on partnerships. The Class of 1979, that's their reunion weekend, and we are going to host them in a renovation -- or a high school renovation tour. Now, these are all classes that have never -- that have not seen the high school after it's been renovated, so at 10:00 a.m., we will bring back all the old pictures that we have that showed the before and after and have the Class of 1979 here for us that Tri-County Chamber event coming up that we, again, partnered with the Tri-County Chamber on October 24th. It's a college fair and business expo, and they're expecting 300 to 500 people. Be about 80 schools and about 40 businesses here to showcase not only the schools in the area, colleges, community colleges, but also different businesses that, you know, there's some partnerships and career pieces that our students and families can -- can come and be under one roof and be a part of here, so we're excited about that. The Potsgrove Education Foundation, we met last week for the first time with a newly configured board, and we look to generate additional ideas and revenue to serve our students in the district. Teacher mini-grants, which we did last year, we brought those back. Those applications will be out next Monday, October 1st, or Tuesday, whatever October 1st is. They will go out to the district. Last year, we had four recipients, and if you give me just two seconds to read what they were, because I think it's important that we know where that money went. Karen Ataviano at Ringing Rocks. She received -- her mission was to create an environment that fosters taking risks and making mistakes, beginning each day with steam boxes. The grant money allowed them to immediately engage in this type of environment. Karen used the funds to purchase magnetic tile sets, and they filled up two or three steam boxes and welcomed her students each day. At Lower Potsgrove, Jen Egan. She is -- she's worked for Camp Invention, which is a part of a nationally-recognized nonprofit summer enrichment program created by the National Inventors Hall of Fame in partnership with the United States Patent and Trademark Office. There's a lot of things going on there. But the camps challenge -- challenged children in grades K to 6 to find their inner inventor by learning the process of innovation, and she used those funds to give three of our students who would not have that same opportunity to be able to participate in those camps. Jean Randall at West Potsgrove. She used her grant to purchase OZObots, which are programmable through a color -- they're little robots that are round robots that are technology. You guys can certainly be much more eloquent about it than I am, but they use a color-sequence codes that uses markers and blocking programming language on the computer. These robots are hands-on way to experience and understand the concepts of coding by learning sequencing, algorithms, loops, and conditional logic. And the last one was Danielle Small at the high school. The funds were used to buy a Juice Plus Tower for the library, and that is a -- it's basically a -- it's an environment to grow different types of vegetables, et cetera, and she used that as a blueprint for growing and processing. The process planting seeds, grow and eat their own produce, and also served as an inspiration to continue her mission for healthy living at the school. So they were the four grants that we gave away, and again, we look forward to being able to do that again this year with our mini-grants. Lastly, our committee was chosen for the Athletic Hall of Fame this year. The Hall of Fame, we've never had a Potsgrove Athletic Hall of Fame. This will be the first year. The induction ceremony will be in January, January 18th. So the committee's charge this year is to nominate and elect four individuals into the Athletic Hall of Fame for the first induction, and after that, it'll be just two individuals each year, but the first year, we felt that four would be a good number to start, so. I think I made it within time. One minute to spare. Does anybody have any questions?
No questions. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity.
I especially liked the part about the Education Foundation and the mini-grants. Mini-grants really give an opportunity for the teachers to explore some of their own interests that are maybe a little bit outside of part of the center of the curriculum and gives the students a chance to explore something outside of the center of the curriculum as well, because it's not just about keeping the kids' interests, it's also about keeping the teachers engaged as well, giving everybody a chance to explore the things that they love to do. So thanks very much to the Education Foundation for making those mini-grants possible. I think that's a great thing, and thanks very much for that presentation, Mr. Durenzo.
Thank you. Moving on to action items for personnel.
I'd like to make a motion that we --
Make a motion to combine 5.1 to 5.3.
Second.
We're gonna have a bidding war here today. We had a motion and a second to move on action items for personnel, 5.1 to 5.3, a motion and a second. But 5.1 to 5.3, I didn't hear 5.4, was that? That's right. Okay, very good. I thought I got that right. Are there any questions on 5.1 to 5.3? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Sort without objection.
Okay, moving forward to supplemental and special payment appointments. District is asking the board to approve the supplemental and special payment appointments as submitted.
We have a motion and a second for 5.4. Are there any questions on 5.4? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Can I make one comment from Mrs. Brolish? She just wanted to advise that there will be more. There are some vacancies, so this is not the end of these. There's a few more, because we're still filling some vacancies, so.
This is not the end-all and be-all. This is just some of them.
For the record, I'm sharing, Mrs. Brolish.
Maybe even most of them, but not all of them. So noted, thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, say no.
No.
All right. Ayes have it.
Moving on to action items for business. 6.1, we're asking the board to recommend the authorization of a contract with the Davidson School for one-on-one services for one student in the amount of $172.56 a day.
We have a motion and a second for item 6.1, the Davidson School one-to-one services. Are there any questions on this issue? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Sort without objection.
Moving on to 6.2, the school bus bid award. We're asking the board to approve award bids for buses and vans to the lowest responsible bidder as presented.
We have a motion and a second for the bus awards, for the buses as they're identified here. Does anybody have any questions on the bus awards?
Yes, I do.
Please.
I know we've talked about this before, but we are just getting destroyed on the trade-ins. I mean, the metal alone on a two-to-nine-passenger van bus is gonna be worth more than $1,000. And I know that's the easy way to go. I know. I mean, that's -- so many of us do that. We just trade our cars in rather than trying to find a buyer. But I don't know. Has anything ever been looked into to do something a little differently, because seriously, someone's making a lot of money off of that $1,000 that they're giving us?
Well, keep in mind that we're keeping our vans and buses for 14, 15 years.
I understand, but I'm saying the metal alone. If you were to go recycle the metal, you'd make way more than $1,000.
We can -- I think the trades on the other vehicles are more appropriate. These were $500 apiece. They're old. They have a lot of miles on them. We have access to an online bidding program that we can -- we can pull it out and pull the trades on the nine-passenger vans out and attempt that. We haven't done it previously, but we were planning on doing some with our old maintenance vehicles as well. So if the board wishes to do that, I can pull those two trades off for that.
That's up to the board. I mean, this was just something I wanted to bring up because I happened to notice it.
So it's essentially scrap metal at this point? There's not usable trade value here, right?
I mean, they're still running. They're inspected, but I don't -- I wouldn't expect them to be heavily sought after. They're pretty old.
But in a junkyard or something, I mean, obviously, if they're still running, it still has usable parts, it has usable, you know, everything. And I know junkyards don't pay a whole lot, but just for that size vehicle, you know, that just seems to me to be a huge ripoff.
What's the mileage?
The mileage is -- I don't have the exact mileage, but they're over 200,000.
Oh, jeez. Yeah, you're talking scrap metal.
So all the vehicles we're replacing have over 200,000 miles and about 15 years old?
I don't have the nine-passenger vans here with me. The bus, the larger vehicles are, yes. So we're keeping our -- all of our vehicles for a minimum of like 12 years. Some of them deteriorate before that, before we get to 15. Our buses last 15.
So is there any interest in amending the motion or keeping the motion as is?
I'll just comment. I was planning a voting no to be consistent with my previous votes with this, based on previous discussions in previous years, but hearing what you're saying regarding -- I know we're not sure about the nine passengers, but being over 200,000 miles and so forth, I'm gonna personally be voting yes.
The reason I ask about the scrap situation was because I know scrap is down, and it's been for years. And so, for example, a pickup truck is maybe $350. So a van, you know, if you're talking about two of those at $500 apiece, if that's the intent there. It was just -- I -- what I hate is if we move forward and lose the money, if we end up making out better with the trade-in prices that they're offering. I know that they look low, but if it's simply scrap, they're not low. So that's why I was just kind of getting some clarity there.
Like I said, we're planning on doing -- going through municipal bid with our maintenance vehicles that we're replacing. That was gonna be my first foray into that product, to see what kind of prices we can get. If you wanted -- if you want to do it in advance with these, we can, or just leave this go and we'll see how we make out on our trucks.
Unsorted scrap is around, was around, and this is several years ago, close to a decade ago. 10 to 15 cents a pound. So you ask yourself, a nine-passenger van, my truck's 5,000 pounds. So 5,000 pounds of 10 -- 10 to 15 cents a pound, your thousand bucks is ahead of it. And it's unsorted scrap, because what they want is sorted scrap. They want steel in one pile, aluminum in another pile, chrome plate in another pile, and blah, 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 blah. So, you know, my first reaction looking at this, and I don't know what scrap metal prices are, I didn't check, is a thousand bucks is pretty close to what the scrap metal value is.
Just to give everybody a heads up, forget the scrap. The money in this for the salvage is gonna be all the different pieces. It's gonna be the windshield, it's gonna be the windows, it's gonna be all the different steering columns, it's gonna be all the different pieces. That's where the salvage company's gonna make the money. The money, they don't care about the metal.
Yeah, but they -- but the scrap, if you're talking scrap metal dealer, scrap metal dealer wants it sorted.
I think what I was trying to say is if you junk it rather than scrap it, if you're junking it, then that's where the money comes in. It's when someone's looking for that particular make and model of a door because one got, you know, smashed in, or they're looking for a door handle, or, you know, all the different pieces, because this is such an old vehicle, they probably don't manufacture it anymore, so it's hard to find parts for it.
Eric, I can probably answer some of this. When you went out for the bid, were the trades already set up in the system?
They're alternative bids.
So in essence, we told them we want two vehicles, and we're gonna have two vehicles to trade? Nine, nine times out of 10, they're automatically gonna try to do it to where, for tax purposes and such, when it comes to buying different vehicles and stuff and all, like the same thing. If you guys went to a car dealer, they do the same thing. They're gonna ask you if you have a trade-in, because they're gonna wanna get a price difference because they know they wanna do the thing. So they may give you only a -- say it's only $1,000, but they're giving you off more on the car to try to equal it out. So you could try to get it up on the trade, but then they're gonna increase the car because they want their profit margin to be the exact same, so it's really not gonna make a difference.
So just to clarify then, the prices that are here aren't based on having those trade-ins?
No, it was an alternate bid. We can choose not to trade in the vehicles.
Okay. How long would that take to run through that system to see if there is somebody interested in the -- like, because I don't wanna hold up, if we need these vehicles, I don't wanna hold that up, but if it's a, I put it in, I know by the end of the day...
No. I think if we're going to -- if we're going to use municipal bid to try and auction the vehicles, that's fine. We just tell them that we're not going to trade these vehicles in, and then we'll get what we get out of the auction. We don't -- we won't have a chance to go back the other way again. I'm fine either way. I'm fine either way.
Are you allowed to place a reserve on the bids, so that, you know, if they come back, so we don't end up settling it for, you know, the nine-passenger one for $25 or something like that?
Yeah, I can, but then we're gonna have two nine-passenger vehicles with 200 and some thousand miles on it.
But then you can go to the -- then you can do the trade-in.
No, the trade-in, the trade-in will have to happen when we do it, when we get the vehicles. We'll have to tell them today whether we're gonna trade in the vehicles.
Okay, so you have to know today, really, one or the other.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the other factor is winter's coming, and at some point in time, you're going to have to drive something through the snow, and, you know, I've got a car with 100,000 miles on it, 200,000 miles on it, in this area with these hills, this may not be the most fun thing in the world.
Okay. We have this discussion pretty much every year. So since we do, how about this year, we go ahead and do this with this municipal bid, and we will roll the dice, and we are going to either make money or lose money this year on municipal bid.
Or just on the nine-passenger van.
Well, let's hear what the betters wanna do. Do we wanna do the nine-passenger, or do we wanna do all of them?
I defer to Dave. I mean, he's researched this municipal bid.
No, no, no. You made the bet. You made the bet. I wanna hear what your bet is.
I think I started this.
Okay, go ahead. House calls. What's your bet?
I would say, I'm trying to -- so it's two nine-passenger vans.
Okay.
For $78,300, correct?
Yes.
And we're getting $1,000 per van, or $1,000?
So.
So we're getting $500 per van?
Right.
Okay, so I'd say definitely those, and then the, I don't know, what an 18 plus two?
It's an 18-passenger van with two wheelchair vans.
Oh, plus two wheelchair, okay, gotcha. And so we're just doing one, and that's, we're getting $4,000 for that.
Right. And the same, the same for the 22-passenger, 24-passenger vans.
Getting $8,000.
$4,200 apiece.
Oh, well, I'd say those, personally. An 18-passenger van, I mean, 24-passenger van, and we're getting $4,000 for it?
Right.
I would add those in, too.
Okay.
Just me personally, I'm one of nine.
Okay. So we're gonna sell five vehicles on municipal bid. We're gonna sell the two 24-passenger vans, we're gonna sell the one 18-passenger wheelchair van, and we're gonna sell two nine-passenger vans on municipal bid, and hoping to make more than...
$13,000.
$13,500. Okay? That's the bet.
$13,000.
If we make more than $13,000, we'll sell them again on municipal bid next year, and if we don't, we'll take the bid from whoever's buying them, right? Everybody in on this bet?
I don't think... I don't wanna lose the 13,000.
We might make more.
$25,000.
I'm saying, we've had this, we've had this discussion every year. This is the same, this is the same, same discussion we have every year.
I've played the game both ways.
What's that?
I've sold my cars myself, and I traded them in.
So have I.
Here's an observation. The amount, you do make more money if you sell it yourself.
True.
But it's more of a grief and more of a pain in you-know-where.
But it's okay, because Dave's doing it, not us.
Municipal bids, municipal bids is not really...
We wanna figure Dave's hourly rate, you know? And my boss in industry would say, let's figure him as an hourly employee, and ask, how many hours is it gonna take? Because that's the downside risk of doing this experiment. On the other hand, it's an experiment, and I'm in the business of doing experiments.
It's not my one.
It's, ah, it is. It is. It is. It's, ah, it is. It is. It is, it is, it is. It is our money. It is our money. It's $13,000, right? And there is, there is a chance that we'll make more on the municipal bid. There is a chance that we'll make more. In terms of quantifying it, I don't know. I'm not familiar enough with municipal bid to know what the odds are. I don't. The $1,000 does seem low, especially if, like you said, if we're going the salvage route, if it goes to a salvage yard and somebody salvages it, yeah, we're gonna get more than $1,000 for two nine-passenger vans, guaranteed. On the other ones, I don't know who's gonna buy them, who's gonna have interest, who's gonna get them. I don't know those other two, and if the other two are gonna be more than $4,000 apiece, I don't know.
In fairness, in fairness to this experiment, Dave should keep track of his time because that Dave's time figures into the cost of this.
Quickly losing interest in the experiment. I wanna get to a vote. What I'm saying is, I wanna, I wanna get to a point where we get rid of the argument every year, and we get to a point where we can have a guideline for this, for the administration to know how we're gonna be doing this process every year, whether we're gonna go through municipal bid for the trade-ins, or whether we're gonna go through the bid process as we've got it set up normally. That's really the question that I wanna get us to get to agreement on. The municipal bid is a good alternate. Going through a bidder and having him give us a complete price is a reasonable procedure. Either one's fine. I just wanna pick one and be done with it, so we move forward. And so, this year, we're trying this experiment to see if the municipal bid works and is a reasonable way of going this one year. So yes, please do keep track of your time, not to the quarter hour, just, you know, ballpark, right?
Brought to my attention from Dr. Harney, that if we're gonna go that route, we need to change the number. 256, 564? Take that money out? Yeah, we have to add, put it back, yeah. So it's gonna be up.
Right. 256, I'm sorry?
564.
256, 564, and the other two, the other vehicles to go out the other way. All right, so the motion has been amended. The individual made the motion, agreed to the amendment?
I didn't make the motion.
Just say yes.
Yes, we're gonna move, move track.
Just a minute.
We're gonna amend the motion.
Okay.
Oh, oh, sorry, sorry. Up to 256,000 to sell vehicles.
To, no. Five of the vehicles, just send the other five to the...
Just say yes.
We wanna amend the motion to increase the grand total of 256,504, 564, and take the five vehicles off of this, and we're gonna send to municipal.
Okay. Okay, very good. Are there any further questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, say no. Okay, so ordered, so ordered. With eight to one. Okay, moving on to action items. We have a motion, we have a motion, do we have a second? We have a motion and a second to approve action item 7-1 through 7-3 on education. Does anybody have any questions on 7-1 through 7-3? There are no questions on 7-1 through 7-3. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, say no. So ordered without objection.
Moving on to committee reports. The first report is for operations, facilities.
Okay, the operations and facilities committee held a meeting on September 10th. A copy of the draft minutes are there for your approval, for your review and approval. We looked at the 20 and 2018, 2019 capital projects. We did get many of them finished, several of them were not. One of the things that we're going to be doing in the next month is we're going to be looking at a schedule for the fall of 2019. We wanna get the dugouts finished, or get the dugout started, the stadium sound system. If any of you have been to the games recently, we need, you know, we need to finish that. Review for possible lighting upgrade for the stadium as well. Mr. Cardwell talked about the theatrical rigging system safety inspection that were formed at all Pots Grove School District schools. They found a number of things that needed to be looked at and reviewed. Recommendations were presented by building. The estimated cost for all of the recommendations was on the order of $118,000. None of them had to be done right away, but as you know, it goes into the big hopper of projects that we have and gets looked at on a rolling list. Next thing we talked about was desire to replace the burners at the three schools that, the three schools, Lower West and Middle School. The burners range in the age of 15 to 25 years, manufacturer's no longer in business. Same story we keep having over and over again. They come and they go. The parts that are there are limited aftermarket parts. The boilers are in good condition, but they're looking at the burners only, and each of these need two burners. So six burners, three schools, $215,000. So, see, that adds up pretty quickly. And the last thing we talked about was fire control panels at the middle school and lower. The two things to upgrade these is $43,000. So that's, you know, projects that we looked at that weren't on our list from before. And the other thing was, Mr. Nester stole my thunder on this last one, the Act One index for 2021 is gonna be 2.6%. And you talked about Pots Grove's adjusted Act One index will either be 3 or 3.4%. And we talked about the budget calendar for the current year. And one of the things that we mentioned was that at some point in the near future, we're gonna be talking about the resolution for whether or not we're going to be accepting. You wanna go over that part again, please?
Yes. Because this is an election year, the whole calendar is moved up three weeks. So we need to make a decision sooner rather than later on whether or not we're going to opt to stay within our adjusted index or to go through the entire process set forth by Act One. So if our, if our adjusted index is 3.3 or 3.4%, we haven't seen that yet, would the board be willing to consider a tax increase beyond that? If not, we can, we can adopt a resolution to stay within the index, and then we don't have to worry about meeting all the specific deadlines throughout the rest of the year. But that is, that is your choice. If, if we wanna do that, I would recommend, because of tight schedules over the next few months, that we, we look at adopting that resolution in November.
Somebody may wanna consider making a motion during new business. Mr. Leach? Perhaps?
That's a guarantee.
We don't have to. There's no reason to wait until November. We have to pass it by November.
No, we have to pass it prior to, I think it's the end of January.
End of January.
But by doing it in the fall, we can, you know, preempt the drama.
The thing, the thing is, though, barring something really, really strange happening at the polls in November, this board is gonna be the same board that sits in December and everything else, and we're all the same people. And, yeah, that's about a heck of a write-in. It's all the same people, and we're all pretty much sitting in the same place and sitting with the same ideas. And, you know, I think we're, we know where we're headed in terms of where we think about a 3.4 and going beyond a 3.4 tax increase. So I think the outcome of the resolution vote would probably be the same, all things considered. So we could consider the resolution, or voting on the resolution sooner rather than later. So, maybe there'll, maybe there'll be a vote in new business. Maybe there won't. We'll wait and see.
I have one, I have one question, though.
Go ahead.
In regards to the number two, when it came to the inspection of the OSHA and ANSI standards, unfortunately, I'm not really familiar with those. You were gonna know more about that.
Oh, dear. Okay.
You mentioned that they do not need to be fulfilled immediately. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. I just wanna make sure that usually I would thought stuff like that needs to be done immediately.
Recommendations. Things that may be in compliance with. Mr. Cardwell, I'm gonna put you on the spot.
As Mr. Lindgren said, they were recommendations, standards of, have changed for rigging systems and so forth. So to bring us up to new standards with OSHA, here's a recommendation of doing this, that, or so forth to the equipment that we have. So, nothing has came back as severe, you need to do it immediately, but if you wanna be in today's OSHA regulation compliances.
Some things, some things are grandfathered. Some things, if you're an existing condition, you don't have to change them, but it's a good practice. It may have to do with, yes, may have to do with heights and other things like that. So, I haven't seen the actual report, so I can't give you a list by list of what those 42 things are and which ones are a good idea to do right away, but sooner rather than later. But we'll get over, we'll take a look at that report. And we know that some things have a higher priority than other things on that list, but that's part of what we're looking at. One of the things that's not on the minutes that came out of that report is that we asked for a complete list of the entire shopping list of all the things. And when, we are gonna be looking at, you know, reprioritizing that entire shopping list of all the things coming up. And we're also going to be looking at that list sooner rather than later, also, because our, the budget season is already upon us in the facilities committee because of the fact that the budget season is coming upon all of us sooner rather than later. We're only, what, four meetings away, or two meetings away from budget season. So we kinda need to know what we're gonna be doing next year, so we plan for it in the budget coming up. So we need to prioritize all the lists of what we're doing. And so we'll need to take a close look at what we're gonna be doing here in the, in these projects coming up, and have a good idea of the priorities.
Gotcha. I'm gonna guess also that since everything's moved up, the audit's coming real soon, we're gonna know, we see all the...
Yeah, our auditors were in last week. Actually, we're doing a couple finishing, finishing efforts, and then that'll probably come in at our November meeting.
Okay. Moving on to curriculum integration and technology reports.
All right, I was not present at this meeting, so much to Mark's dismay, I'm going to have to read the minutes. It was an overview for the ACRE system that we use for our data analytics. So, ACRE is the third-party data analytics tool that Pots Grove uses to monitor student achievement and growth. This tool uses data from various assessments such as PSAs, Keystone exams, MAP, AIMS Web, in order to show historical performance of students and provide proficiency projections for future state assessments. The tool is used by the district to monitor student learning, plan specific instruction, design interventions, prepare enrichments, and measure the return on investment of various instructional programs and/or strategies. The assessment calendar. An assessment calendar is shared, was shared, that delineates assessments that are used, the purpose of each assessment, proposed time used for the assessments, and when each is implemented. These assessments are carefully selected each year to best determine how students are performing and how the district can provide a more personalized learning progression for each student. The ACRE Spring Growth Update. After each round of benchmark assessments, ACRE provides the district with a report that shows how buildings, grade levels, and individual students perform on various content areas. Student growth is indicated through colors. These colors indicate higher-than-expected growth, expected growth, lower-than-expected growth, and unsatisfactory growth. In almost all areas, a large percentage of Pots Grove's population is making expected or higher-than-expected growth. That's typically between 75 and 90%. District uses this information to determine those students that have made higher-than-expected growth, so that strategies and programs can be duplicated for other groups of students. Conversely, when students show lower growth than expected, the district is prompted to examine curriculum, pacing, instructional practice, alignment, content, rigor, and/or assessments. The report provides information on all students and also shows historically underperforming students as well as district custom groups. ACRE PSSA proficiency projection results. A second report shows the number of students that met benchmarks in comparison to the percentage that was projected to meet benchmark. This information is helpful to determine those groups that make higher-than-expected growth and perform at higher levels than projected. Several reports, data reports, several reports were shared to show overview, excuse me, academic achievements and growth among student groups. Reports included how students at the 25th percentile, the 50th percentile, and the 75th percentile in Pots Grove compare with the students at the national level. A live demo was given of the ACRE system and the functionality of the system, and available reports were reviewed. And I believe that we will be seeing an abbreviated version of this presentation at a board meeting. That's it. Thank you.
All right, let me try to condense that all real quick into just to the public kinda understands, 'cause one of the things I did want the public to understand when it came to the ACRE was the ACRE was actually approved about three years ago by the board to give the analytics system to the administrators to try to make sure that we were actually getting our money's worth, as into all the different programs and how we're going to do everything with the MAP testing and all the different programs. And I know you see a lot of times, the parents are saying, "We're taking these billion different assessments and such like that." The question just is, is it actually valuable to the administrators to give these assessments, besides you got the PSAs that are required, the SATs and everything like that? And so in essence, the ACRE system is like a funnel. You pour all this stuff in top, and it gives them the specific information and real-time information of how to help our teachers teach our students and properly educate them to make sure that they're reaching those benchmarks, that we're getting the growth that is necessary. One thing that came out at the meeting was the small amount of money, if I'm not mistaken, it was like $10,000 or something. It was really miniscule amount of money, and $10,000 is not miniscule, I guess, but in our realm of $68 million budget, it is, that this piece actually has become an invaluable program to our administrators to help our teachers with educating our students and reach those best benchmarks and reach the growth that is necessary in all our subgroups and everything. So it is definitely something that we wanted to point out to the rest of the board that wasn't happened to be there and such like that, that everybody always asks. We always ask, "What's ACRE? Does it do anything? What's going on with this?" It's actually a very beneficial program that's actually helping our administrators, our principals, and then filtering it down to our teachers. So keeping everybody in that little, to make sure that we're all growing at the expected rate of growth.
Are we seeing that in the scores?
When you're talking about the scores and such like that, you're talking about twofold. You're gonna talk about the PSSA scores, and you're gonna talk about the college readiness scores of the ACT and the SAT scores. And the question just is, you have to decide as into which scores are actually showing the truth, in essence, right? Because if you're gonna say that our students are scoring in a certain level for proficiency at 60%, 50%, 40%, whatever it may be, versus the other, other scores, other school districts, and how everybody's doing, that's one thing. And then you're gonna turn around and you say, "Okay, well, if our students aren't scoring as well proficiently on the PSAs and everything like that, yet they're scoring higher than ever on the..." higher than ever on the SATs, the ACTs, and the other scores that are going to be much more beneficial in showing a student's preparedness for college readiness, I'm going to lean on those scores because those are the national scores and the PSSAs generally going to be mostly state scores and such like that. And I'm going to lean, as we've grown considerably, on the SAT and the ACT score. We're sending more and more students to college-ready programs, more and more students are going into the Western Center, more and more students are ready when they're graduating high school and becoming very good citizens of our community. I'm going to go with that. When it comes to the proficiency scores, the problem I have with those is the tests constantly are changing every two and three years. So right when we get to a point where, okay, we know how it's going to, to go and the teacher understands the test, bam, the state changes it again. So it makes it difficult, I think, on the teachers to constantly, you have to do them, it's state requirement, right? And we all know it. But I think that the overall program is helping the students grow. They may go from 10 percentile to 22 percentile. The state says you're not proficient, but they grew 12 percent. And that growth may have been less if they weren't using the program, may have been from 10 percent to 20 percent. And they may not have gotten the full growth that they would have gotten. The tests we're talking about and what the program's doing is not necessarily going to say, all these students are now going to be proficient, it's to try to get to maximize the growth that we can get in all the students. So when they actually start from school in August and when they finish up in school in June, we want to maximize as much probability of growth we can get out of every student as possible. It's not perfect, no, nothing's going to be perfect, right? Some students are going to be below that number, some students are going to be above that number. But the idea is to give the best tools to the teacher and the program on the ACRE is not. It has nothing to do with the testing. It has nothing to do with MAP. It just tells you how it's progressing. ACRE only sits there and says, hey, look, this is working or this is not working. Currently, the ACRE is showing that the program is having more growth than expected.
Yeah. Can I just add on that? You hit upon the topic of growth and it's not just getting poorly performing students up to standard. It's, one of the things in the demonstration was that we could identify particular groups of students to help all students perform better. So it's not just to bring the lowest students up to the standard, but to help students who are performing well achieve their maximum potential. So that's, that pushes, a rising tide lifts all boats and that pushes everybody up. And one of the things was that happened at the meeting was a change that had been made showed up in the ACRE scores, a change in, oh, I forget which school it was. Lower, I'm not sure. Okay, well, anyway, that change showed up in the scores, in the data that was available to us. So yeah, the day, what's going on in the schools is reflected in the data and can reflect back so that teachers know what they're doing and know where to concentrate. So I think that was a key point.
So Dr. Rannig, Mr. Forrest, I would say you converted somebody over here, huh? I'd say that was an 85 to 92 percent retention. Something like that. Congratulations.
Okay. Moving on to the Athletic Co-Curricular Committee report.
Well, as always, we had an excellent meeting. I appreciate everybody in, in the committee. We really, really, we really get a lot of information. We had our meeting last Tuesday and Mr. Ansbach presented an opportunity for our special needs students and through United Sports Discussion. It's a program called United Sports. The program is sponsored through the Special Olympics and is an inclusive sports program that combines Special Olympic students with regular students. We are going to kick off Bachi in 2020 and the committee was in favor to move this item forward for more details, final costs, before we bring it to the board for approval. But this is a win-win. I mean, we've been recognizing more and more our special needs students and this is going to be an excellent opportunity for them to be a part of something. So we do have some things we have to work out, but Mr. Ansbach gave an excellent report on that. National Federation of High School Program, Mr. Ansbach shared with the committee a potential program to bring live streaming opportunities to Pots Grove. And basically, they would bring in the cameras, I mean, we'd just live stream. There's a lot of work that we have to go and look into this. We can't just jump into it. Again, the, Mr. Ansbach and the committee are dedicated to look into it, so we're going to see if it'll be worthwhile or not. And that was pretty much it because Gary brought everything else up. So we had an excellent meeting and I cannot thank everybody enough.
Thank you. This is Graham. Moving on to new business.
Patty, do you have anything for new business?
I just have one little promo I'd like to bring out. Next year, I'll be 10 years cancer-free here and when I put my hand on the Bible to take my oath, I knew I had cancer, I didn't know what my opportunities were going to be, and you were right next to me. And the soccer team had gotten together and did a Friends Helping Friends soccer match and we have raised almost $10,000 combined over the years that goes down to the people who helped me. And, and they're still helping people, but this money that's raised is just for a patient assistance fund. So if you need gas, if you need groceries, whatever you need at that minute, that money's available. I'm getting goosebumps because I, I still, when you walk in, you never forget, but I'm blessed to be here today. But to make a long story short, the soccer match is this Saturday. It's going to be at 10 o'clock, it'll go back-to-back, varsity first on the turf field and then JVs and all the parents are getting together and bringing donations. We're going to combine the funds with the, the other teams and see what we come up with for the, for the cancer center. So I hope to see everybody there.
Thank you. Congratulations.
I think a perfect segue for the next, next part. The Relay for Life, I'm just going to take one and pass them around. If I don't quite divide them upright, you'll, you'll get yours again. But the Relay for Life has once again approached us as far as using our facilities. The letter, the letter was delivered at the beginning of September. Obviously, last, just a few stats, 579 people participated in the event last year, they raised over $200,000. They honored and celebrated the lives of over 200 survivors. And what I'd like to have the board do for our next meeting is put this one as an action item to approve their request to use the facility on Saturday, June 6th of 2020.
I can make the motion again.
Hope you can.
I would like to make a motion that we approve Relay for Life to use our facilities for the 2020 event on Saturday, June 6th, 2020.
We have a motion in a second. Before we vote on it, because this is a new item of business, we have to open this up for public comment. We get to open this up for public comment. Would anybody care to make public comment on this motion to have Relay for Life hosted at the school yet again? No public comment, so? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, say no. I'll see your motion and raise you one. I think this year should be the first year that we as a board have a team, and I'm stealing this idea from Scott Hutt who proposed it last year, and I didn't take him up on it. But this year, I think we should. So I challenge some of my fellow board members to have, join me sponsoring a team.
You got it.
All right. So we'll do that. That's not a motion that we have to vote on. So, next item of new business, please. That's all you have? You're letting me down. Yeah, he's got a fever. He wants to get out of here. He must have somewhere to go.
I have something real quick. So it is election time in PSBA and last year I proposed this to you all and we decided to abstain in elections. It's just like sort of PSBA Board of Directors type stuff. I don't know any of these people. I have no idea whether, who to vote for, who not to vote for. So last year, we abstained. And also the JOC abstained also. So I just wanted to present that.
Springfield did last night.
Okay. And Springfield did too. So if you all are okay with abstaining, I will go ahead and put our abstention votes through.
Yeah, but if I can just add something to that, please?
The one thing we have to abstain because like you said, you don't really know the people that you're voting for and it's not really fair, but I just see the disconnect with the PSBA and the local school boards. And I think something like that really has to be looked into on their end. I don't know why the disconnect or, you know, but I think it's just a shame that they're, you know, doing the changes in activities that are going on and we are just not really in connect with them.
Speaking of the PSBA, and I, I brought this up to Bob the other night at the football game. I don't know if any of you received your PSBA, like bi-monthly, the magazine, the bi-monthly magazine. If you did and you still have it, flip it over to the back cover. The, the ad that I was completely disgusted by and I, I took a picture of it, it's on my phone if you want to see it. It's from an insurance company insuring for basically violence in the schools. So basically, if your school gets shot up, there's an insurance company that'll cover, cover you for that. They even put in there they would cover funeral costs. I was appalled. Number one, why did the PSBA take this ad? Why did they accept it? On the back cover no less, which is the, you know, most expensive advertising spot in a magazine. And how dare these people capitalize on the violence that's happening in schools today? And I understand there's other companies that are capitalizing on it, I get it, but to put out insurance and to offer it to school districts and say, hey, guess what? You get an active shooter, we got you covered monetarily. We'll even pay for the funerals. I, I just didn't even know what to do about it. I, I was just completely appalled.
It seems like an example of the disconnect that Patty was talking about, I would say. Little bit, not on, not on point with maybe where we are in terms of how we're trying to deal with the sensitivity and how we're trying to approach it as something that we recognize as reality, but not something that we want to focus on the negative aspects of it. But thank you for bringing that to our attention. Yeah, I had kind of the same reaction. So how do you come back from that? I'm not sure.
Yeah. I'm having difficulty here before I do the Act One because y'all know I'm an insurance agent, so I understand the, and I, and I normally wouldn't say stuff like this because, but it's my field.
It was, it was the.
The insurance world is about trying to, and I understand what they're saying as into whether or not it's inappropriate, I guess, to offer a, an insurance for a possible horror situation. But that being said, right, if those families that were involved had nothing, you'd be amazed how many people and how this, the horror stories I hear on a weekly basis of not having any type of life insurance at all and even the remote thing happens to their children or to themselves and it completely destroys the family. I just had a case literally just two weeks ago where a person was in a car accident, passed away and unfortunately his, he had no insurance. I know this is different, it's not life insurance, but it's just insurance as a whole to where because they had no life insurance or anything like that, it caused the family to give up a house that was in their family for over 50, 60 years and completely wiped out everything they ever had and everything like that. I don't want to bring up any type of information we had to exec, but there's insurance for the craziest things out there that sometimes is necessary, even if it's something you would never think, why in the world would I buy insurance for that? Because unfortunately, things happen. Now, I understand it is definitely not something that people want to even remotely consider or think about, it's a horror situation. But I don't think also that the insurance business should be classified as being disrespectful or anything like that. I, I, they're trying to do what they best, in their term of what they can do. That's all. On the better side, I like, I know, because I, I know I'm one of the minority on that one. On the better side, I'd like to make a motion that the school board stays within the Act One index for the 2020, 21-year school budget.
Can you have a unanimous second? Is there ever such a thing as that?
Can I, can I suggest that I draft a resolution and bring it to the next board meeting?
Sure.
That'd be just fine. So then we won't vote. We'll just have you draft a resolution, bring it to the, all right. We'll do that. So then we don't have to have public comment and we won't vote. But I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right.